All right. All right, ready to go?
Okay. Evening, everyone, and welcome to the December fifteenth meeting of the Town of Brighton Planning Board. Just want everybody to know that public gathering restrictions because of COVID nineteen and adoption of chapter four seventeen of the laws of two thousand and twenty one, the planning board will be conducted remotely beginning at seven P M., which is what is happening now. Members of the public are most welcome and able to view this meeting via Zoom, and there is a link on the town website. Go to the live streaming at the landing page. Written comments may be submitted to Ramsey Boehner, our executive secretary at Town Hall, two thousand three hundred Elmwood Avenue, Rochester, one, four, six, one, eight via basic mail or via email to Ramsey dot Boehner, which is B O E H N E R at Town of Brighton dot org. The public may join the Zoom meeting and share comments with the board, and we welcome you to do so. The Zoom meeting information for Zoom meeting information, please visit the website Town of Brighton dot org. Like I said, on the landing page, look for the icon that says livestream. Of our agenda tonight, we are beginning here at seven o'clock. We will have a roll call. And then this evening, we're going to actually have a as our first item ahead of the public meetings, public hearings, a agenda review with staff and the board members. Let's start Ramsey, would you please call the role?
Altman.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Vader.
Psalm.
I see him, David, unmute yourself. Can I mute yourself, David, and say here? Hey, Mr. Faders having trouble, um, let the record show that.
Yes, here.
Thank you, David.
Here.
Delaney.
Here.
Babcock Steiner.
Here.
Sowsky. Here. Option is member four.
All right, thank you. Hi, we are going to, we're adding a kind of a new segment that's actually an old segment for the board and staff, which is we would typically meet prior to the start of the of the meeting, and we are reinstituting that tonight, beginning tonight as an agenda item on the on the meeting at the meeting. So tonight, Ramsey, do you want to just kind of walk through the agenda force for the board members?
Yeah, first item, which is application twelve P O one twenty one is for a site plan modification to install a rooftop standby generator. Our code says if it doesn't meet certain regulations that they have the ability to come to the planning board and seek approval from you guys. The issue is that it's supposed to be behind the building. And this application is on top of the building. And that is why it's in front of you. The two things that staff is concerned about is obviously the structural capability of the roof. And to make sure the decimal levels don't exceed, I think it's six seventy six D B's. If anyone has any questions on that. The next application is F S I Construction, application twelve P O two twenty one. We heard that a couple of years ago, we granted approval. They're back again because all their approvals have lapsed, and they need to come back and get new approvals. You will see in the report that we are recommending it be table because they, one, they need to go out and get their variances. And two, they still never out addressed the comments that we gave them the last time. So we would like them to finish up the comments that were outstanding the last time. And get their zoning variance.
Ramsey, did we did we grant an extension to this approval?
Yes, we did.
How many times can we grant an extension just for one year?
Granted for an additional year.
Okay. All right.
And that's otherwise this.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say on that extension, that extension has since lapsed, Bill. So you could not grant an extension anyway. Now you have to grant an extension before lapses.
Yep.
Is this otherwise the same application?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay.
That's what we just want to check for. The next application, which is the application of ten P N B one dash twenty one is postponed. They are still working on a revising their application to make a presentation to the Public Works Committee. Next application that we'll be hearing tonight is ten P N B two twenty one. The application is in a steep slope woodlot. And it has got an architectural review board approval. Right now where we are, they need a variance for the driveway location. Or they need to figure out a way to regrade the property where that driveway could meet our code. And there's also some engineering issues that they need to clear up regarding the storm and sanitary and how they're designed. And then some other general housekeeping on the drawings and the information that they submitted. I believe that there may be neighbors that may be speaking tonight regarding this application. I don't know if anyone has any questions or anything about this.
Well, I read through the materials. I'll be interested to see if there's some ways to resolve some of those.
Yeah, I think there would be, but um, that's for discussion. The next application is twelve P N B one twenty one is the application of the University of Rochester.
Ramsey Ramsey, can I just jump in? I see that we have an individual raising his hand to comment. This is not the time for public comments right now. This is staff reviewing the agenda with the board and only for discussion between the board and staff. We do it in public so that you all can see what we're talking about, but we will be opening public hearings on each of these matters. Isn't that the time after we have presentations? You lost.
You lost.
You lost me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well.
We hear you right now. We hear you right now.
Now you're clear.
Don't don't know what happened there. I was just, I don't know how much of my comments you heard. But we had an individual who had raised his hand to make comments at this time. And I said that this is not the time for the public to make comments. That this is simply a discussion between the staff and the board for the board's purposes, and we do it in public so that the public can know what we are discussing as a board. There will be a time for public comments on each of these applications that will be during the public hearings, which will be called in a little while, and the public will have an opportunity to comment after each applicant presents.
Thanks, Ken.
That's all.
All right. And Ramsey, you you had started on twelve P N B one twenty.
Yes, which is the preliminary site plan approval, preliminary E pod approval for Woodlot and political area conditional use permit to construct a twenty one thousand three story addition to the laser lab.
Okay.
As you can see from my our comments, the drawings and the submission is incomplete. There are a number of items that we still need to have submitted. One of the things that I think we do need to do is start the secret process. And that would be to start with a coordinator review and seek lead agency status. Right now, the town board is the lead agent for the project. And that we still need the master plan and a number of things that I listed in the planning board report. I believe the reason, part of the reason, the application, and this is up to the applicant's engineer to explain. They submitted this application before the last planning board meeting. In an effort to try to get in front of you guys, the C law.
I see.
I got a question about this. I can't like, I can't fully remember when the time is to ask these questions because it's been a while since we did an agenda review. But I I I thought last month at conceptual review, there was no additional parking proposed. Or did I just misunderstand last month? I thought when they showed the plans last month that that or they just didn't show it last month. I feel like because I think I commented and said I was happy to see the parking had been removed. So then I was confused this month that it was there.
Yeah, there was parking removed from an original proposal behind the the laser lab, but they did just redistribute a hundred, hundred or so parking spots around the campus.
Okay.
You'll see in my comments, still trying to understand that the hundred spaces don't really are not consistent with what they're saying for trip generation. So that is one of the comments that we're going to need to have addressed before we can, you know, do a determination of significance for this project. Give them an opportunity to, you know, do a full submission and start the process.
Thanks.
It is a public.
Your your comments that we've got were based on an application submitted prior to last last month's meeting.
That's right.
Okay. All right. All right. And what have we got in the way of signs tonight, Ramsey or Jeff? We have three.
We have, we have the three signs. I think at that time we could, Jeff will present them to the board.
All right.
And that's all I really had. I don't know if the board has, you know, any questions. Again, hopefully having the reports a little bit earlier will help you. And again, call Jeff or us, and we can try to get get it to you. And the way I say call calls, but certainly better than emails. I can take fifteen a day. Easily.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Hey Ramsey, I have a question regarding the the Terrence site development on Elmwood. Because I saw something in the Democratic Chronicle newspaper back the Sunday, November twenty eighth. There was an article about development. And it mentioned home leasing and Providence housing teaming up to build some townhomes and some other potential apartments on the on the east side of that site. Do we expect to see anything submitted to us soon regarding that?
Or have? I'm not sure. I did talk with them. A little bit of the problem is the banks freeing up some financing. And I believe that they were still working with the city on their incremental development plan. Was the last I heard. But that they are, that that is a their 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 proposal right now. And what they're doing with the city really is to get the infrastructure and the road in. And then they want to build the residential portion of the project.
Okay.
Is my understanding of where we are.
All right. I mean, it was a positive. There was a positive spin in the article, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, it should be. What they're proposing from what I've seen is it's kind of exciting. I think it's good use of the land, and I hope they can pull it together, and we can do something about the Terrance Building.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just and just so everyone knows, I mean, this is this housing is proposed to be affordable housing. I want to say Ramsey was about three months ago that the developer presented to the Public Works Committee. I think it's been that long.
Yeah.
And and we just haven't heard much back since then.
I did talk to them when they did the article just to get some background. And that was that's latest since the article was written, John.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, folks. Well, let's let's move on. We have meeting minutes that will be reviewed at our January nineteenth meeting from both October and from November meetings. So those will be reviewed and discussed at that time. At this time, we're going to hear our public hearings. Mr. Secretary, were these public hearings properly advertised for tonight?
Yes, they were. They were properly advertised in the daily record of December ninth, two thousand and twenty one.
All right, we will hold those now and for just to remind folks application of Quickleys in twelve corners, that's ten P N B one dash twenty one has been postponed at the applicant's request. So we start tonight with application twelve P oh, one dash twenty one. This is the application of Premium Mortgage Corporation owner and Charles Shortino. And I apologize if I mispronounced that. This is for a site plan modification for the property at twenty five forty one Monroe Avenue. Who do we have with us tonight representing the applicant?
Good evening, everybody. Charles Shortino. Nice to see everybody.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you just give us a brief description of the of the proposal? I think we all know the building, but I'm not sure I gathered exactly where on top of the building. If this is that this is proposed to be located.
Yes. So as you know, we are located at twenty five forty one Monroe Avenue. On the roof of our building, we have an elevator shaft that if you split the building in half horizontally, it would be, I guess, towards the Monroe Ave side versus the the back creek side of the building. The elevator shaft is approximately seven feet wide by nine feet long, which you can see in that portal right there. There is a roof membrane on there. It's called a modified vitamin roof membrane. And we are seeking permission to put a thirty five kilowatt Generac generator, natural gas. It's the smallest three phase commercial generator that we can put up there. We're looking to put it run in parallel with the building on the seven foot side, for lack of a better term. It'll be on two steel beams that register steel is going to install for us. And they're going to be sitting on four posts that will be anchored and secured into the cement block, the existing elevator shaft.
Okay. And you say this is running lengthwise essentially parallel with Monroe Avenue or parallel with the alongside, parallel with the face of the building.
Correct. And I took a measurement from the edge of the building to the right edge of the generator that would be closest to Monroe Avenue. We're approximately fourteen and a half feet from the edge of the building.
Does the does the red indicate the the actual size and dimension of the of the generator itself or are there any screen walls?
That would be the generator. We are going to impose it level two enclosure. The enclosure size is approximately thirty eight inches by fifty seven and a half inches by ninety five inches. So that is just a rendering that our engineer came up just to visualize for client's purposes of what we're potentially looking at.
Right. John Sowsky, you you kind of know a little more about this stuff than than I do.
Yeah. Sure, I have a few questions. Is there how is how is access to get to the roof to provide routine maintenance? For the
We have two stairwells. We'll call it one on the Tom Wall side and one on the Sherman Williams side. They both have free access from the ground all the way up.
All right, that's good. I have a question about the the structure, the the elevator shaft structure, did did the structural engineer, was he able to determine if there were vertical reinforcing bars in the concrete block walls to give them a fair amount of structural rigidity or don't you know that?
I don't know if there are existing in there, but he gave me a rendering that the there's going to be one foot tall stub posts, and then they're going to sit on a toward I'm looking for. A base, for lack of a better term, and then the base is going to be bolted into the concrete and he had said that if the the cement blocks are hollow, we're going to have to fill those in with concrete and prep those before we can do anything. Yep, that's the one I was looking at.
Yeah, I I would have hoped that that top course of concrete masonry units around around the top of that elevator shaft would have been a solid, what what's called a bond beam around the top of the wall. By putting in that comment to ground it, if it's not solid, makes me a little concerned about the the structural integrity of this fair sized generator with a a pretty good face being, you know, getting a wind load against it and making sure that it it has enough structural support underneath it so that it's not going to get uplifted and possibly, you know, blow around or make sure that the vibrations, when it does operate isn't going to provide some vibrations transmitted to the elevator shaft and start shaking the concrete blocks loose. So anyway, it's it's worth some follow up with the structural engineer to make sure he he feels totally comfortable with the situation.
Understood. And we're assuming that they're hollow. We won't know until we actually open up the roof membrane.
Okay. How 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 where is is natural gas already up at the roof or rooftop gas fired rooftop units there?
Yes, there's a pipe about four feet away from here that is feeding one of our RTUs. And they could easily just connect right in there and be fairly simple.
All right, that's good. Thank you. Okay.
That's the easiest part.
Sure. What would be the decimal levels of the generator with the the enclosure?
So the representative from Generac said inside the enclosure at full load, it's going to be sixty one decimal.
Okay. And what time of day will the generator be tested?
So they're telling me they can do it whenever we request, and obviously we would request daytime hours preferably Monday through Friday, unless you want me to do it on a Saturday mid morning, but definitely daytime and not overnight.
Okay. And it's only going to be used during emergencies, I imagine, right?
Emergency only, yes. It's for our infrastructure. Since we're a financial institution, we're just trying to protect our server equipment and our door access controls, just to make sure the building is secure. Couple outlets, just in case, but that's the primary reason. We wanted to go as small as possible for the biggest bang to the cost.
Are there any other questions from board members?
I'm all set. Thanks.
David.
I'm all set.
Okay. Jason. Karen.
I'm set.
All right, Ken. All good. All right. Okay. Thank you, Chuck. This is a public hearing and I'd like to invite anybody interested in speaking to this application, please please do so by raising your hand. And I guess if all else fails, just kind of wave your arms around and Jeff and Ramsey will are looking for you. If there's anybody interested, please please indicate by raising your hand.
I don't see anybody, Phil.
All right. All right. At that, at this point, we're going to, we will move on. Thanks, Chuck. All right. Our second application tonight is for the application of F S I Construction Frankenberger owner and three thirty B H T L Partners, Britain and India Town Line Partners LLC for preliminary and final site plan approval, E pod permit approval, demolition review and approval to raise a single family home constructed ten thousand square foot medical office building on property located at three thirty three hundred Brighton, Henry Townline Road. Who do we have representing F S I?
Good evening, board members. I'm David Cox, one of the owners of Pastoral Associates, and I'm here representing F S I tonight. So as mentioned and talked about previously, this project was approved by the planning board on October sixteen, two thousand and nineteen. That approval has since expired. These plans are the exact plans that were submitted and approved previously. It was one of the easiest applications. I just had to hit print. So yeah, like I said, no changes whatsoever, the exact same plans. And was mentioned, we need the E pod water course permit, a demo permit, and then site plan. We have submitted for the variances that were brought up earlier. So we will be going before the Z B A for that. And then just real quick to refresh everyone, it's a ten thousand square foot medical office building. There is sixty nine parking spaces, sixty seven is required, so we we meet that. D M C D O T reviewed the traffic study, and they approved that. They were good with that. Right now, the single family house has a curb cut onto Brighton, Henry of the Townline Road. We will be closing that and coming off Canal View. So anytime we can eliminate a curb cut on Brighton, Henry of the Townline Road is very good. We do have a quite robust landscaping plan that has thirty three trees and two hundred and forty seven shrubs. So you know, see if Jeff goes to that. Yeah, I can. It's, yeah, they're they're shown on the cover sheet. So yeah, there shows all the all the different trees and shrubs. So we've we've tried to fill in every every spot we could, you know, with with some really nice landscaping there. The project does have forty three percent green space. And all lighting, you know, is dark sky compliant and three thousand K temperature, so meets all town requirements. And then the building was, you know, approved by the A R B. So I don't know if you have the the architectural, the building three D. There. So there's a just a proposal of what the building is going to look like. But that's that's pretty much it.
All right. Thank you, David. This is what I I do recall and are the, could you just clarify? Had you had you secured the variances previously as well?
Yes, previously, but they expired, so we need to reget them.
So this is this is kind of a formality where we likely, I'm sure we did, waited until you had your variances secured before we gave preliminary and final site plan approval as well as A R B approval was necessary for us to to give you final approval and seems like it's going to be the same situation this time that as long as this is all the same, we just need to.
One of the things, Bill, is that they never address the outstanding comments that we had last time. We approved it with conditions and they never, they just dropped it.
I see.
This time we're saying, no, you need to address all these comments.
Yeah, we can certainly. Yeah, we can cer- certainly address all those comments and look at the town staff comments that were were issued and and do a full, you know, address all of those in writing and make revisions as necessary.
Alright.
And that's all I had.
Alright. Thanks, Ramsey, appreciate it. Uh, other board members have questions or concerns?
I have no comments. This is John.
Okay.
Hey, Bill, this is Ken. I just wanted to make what is probably an obvious point, which is since the approvals have all expired, we're on a brand new record here. So whatever is gonna just by your approvals, whatever might justify um, ZBA's approvals, if that's the decision made by ZBA, if that's the decision made by the planning board, this this record needs to support that. Whatever happened in the past is erased, it doesn't exist, has no impact. Your discretion is being exercised anew. Um, we even have some new board members, as does ZBA. So I don't know if that discretion's gonna be exercised in the same manner as it was before. Um, so I just wanted to make that point that although the applicant, making the application might have been very easy, whatever happened before, this is a brand new record and whatever decisions are made are gonna be based on this record, not the past record.
Okay, thank you. And uh, I guess in 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 light of that um, Ramsey, would you see yourself um using your your last uh, letter uh, just getting retitled um with the conditions that were that you had uh, had sent out previously?
Yes, and the uh, engineering comments.
Okay, okay. So those just get a uh, those will be updated with a with a new, a new letter and.
Yeah, that's where the uh, uh, recommendations and uh, uh, conditions that uh, for consideration were derived from.
Okay. Alright. So let's see, Karen, you probably were not involved with this. You, do you yourself have any questions or concerns about about this um, application?
I'll I'll wait and and uh, comment later perhaps. Thank you.
Alright. Um, anybody else, other questions for the applicant?
Um, David, do you know when they're planning to commence demolition? And the idea of construction?
Yeah, the, when they have all their approvals in place, that's the plan.
That is, do they have uh, someone for the building?
Yes.
They do. And um, so then have you guys contacted New York State DEC yet?
Yes, we have the required approval for the storm discharge pipe.
Okay. And the uh, and any other permits you might need for the stream encroachment?
Correct.
Okay. I don't have any other questions myself.
Alright, alright. Uh, thank you, Ramsey and David. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone attending tonight's meeting that cares to address this application?
I don't see anybody.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we will move on to our next application. Uh, again, uh, the application of Quickleys in twelve corners uh, is being postponed, fringles to the application ten P N B two dash twenty-one, the application of James Tabby owner for preliminary site plan approval and preliminary EPod permit approval to construct a twenty-two thousand twenty-two square foot, single family home with first floor garage, storage area on property at eight thirty Highland Avenue. Who is here tonight um, representing the the applicant?
Oh, we have Evan Gaffel from Costage and we have Jerry Coon from Hamlin Architects.
Great. But Evan, you wanna give us a a brief uh?
Sure, I'm just gonna give a ha- gonna give a heads up with these Zoom calls, sorry for any uh, background noise with the three kids upstairs, but just a
We understand.
Yeah. Um, so the property located at eight thirty Highland Drive uh, is about a half acre. Um, we are looking to propose a single family residential house um, on the lot. Um, as it has been discussed, it is uh, steep slope and woodland. Um, I'm gonna start with the existing conditions of the site. Uh, the site currently now has a curb cut that we're trying to utilize um, from Highland Ave and then it kind of, the driveway kind of comes up, as you can see in the dark gray um, and and shares access with the neighbor to the west. That is be being proposed to be removed um, while trying to utilize the existing curb cut um, for this purpose. Um, kind of situated based on code and where the slopes and the less least amount of impact um, affected the building is kind of as center of the site. Um, you know, we we will impact a number of trees um, for the driveway access up mostly and some of the grading. Um, the total number of trees that will be impacted um, are fifteen total. Um, and they they range um, from being locust, elm, arborvitie, ash, walnut and a number of them are in, you know, poor condition just because of the species. Um, again, the house, the whole, the whole point or the whole objective of this was to minimize impact um, and really, you know, respect this this spot and fit the house into it. Um, the house is designed to step into the slope um, which allows us to use the building and to minimize uh, the amount of grading needing to to achieve this. Um, and then what comes with the two is the erosion control and drainage. Um, when we made our first initial um, application, we did receive town comments. Um, and we're, we're currently have addressed some of them and are continuing to work through them. Um, we are setting up a, a time to meet Everett and the town staff to review some of, some of the additional comments or some of the detailed engineer um, concerns. Um, you know, we we've modified our erosion control um, following the blue books um, with multiple uh, levels to divert the stormwater, to capture it, to control it, to slow it down, stabilize um, all of of that. Um, let's see, the the driveway with the variance being four feet away from the property line, that was brought to our attention um, through the staff comments. Um, you know, we were originally utilizing that curb cut to reduce the impact. Um, we will be talking to uh, Rick Stefano, town staff and Everett regarding this. Uh, we did a preliminary um, look at it today, I think we can shift that curb cut to the west and still achieve, you know, the 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 amount of grade that's allowed per code and shifting that the four feet off the line would also um, prevent any grading to um, it contain everything within the site. Um, just kind of, I think that is the majority of it, the landscape plan, um, the whole, the the idea is to get this house built, stabilize it as quick as possible. Um, the client wants to build this into and create a, you know, preserve the natural setting uh, or enhance it. Um, so we have a couple of different environmental conditions going on within the site. Um, dealing with steep slope, um, there's some black walnut that certain plant material needs to be uh, designed to allow that to work underneath their canopies um, in in the area. And then there's some other areas that will be more, we're calling showy or sunny, um, that will be a mix of plants. So we have the three plant pellets that are designed of different species, mostly native um, that will be installed. Um, stabilize the soil and, you know, the the idea is to not have a highly manicured um, landscape that's gonna take a lot of disturbance or access um, or, you know, maintenance on a routine basis, kind of set it and and let it do its thing. So we have a few things to work out with the staff and we're trying to coordinate that. Um, I I guess our 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 plan is to uh, set that up as soon as possible. Um, and then I make any adjustments that are needed and come back to planning board. Resubmit in January, I think would be the 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 plan, significant amount of time to work through those comments. And I, I think that's it.
Evan, are there, are there variances required to accomplish this particular plan that we're looking at?
There is with this one, it was the one that was brought up that the um, driveways within the four feet of the the property line or pavement is within four feet. Um, you know, we were again utilizing that existing curb cut, but we think um, we we can shift that to eliminate that need of a variance.
I see. Alright. Other questions from staff or board members?
I have a few, have the uh, has the uh, house been approved by the architectural review board yet?
We, we have not gone to the architecture. No. Since, since, since we were doing preliminary and then final, we were, we were intending to do that step in between.
Okay. You may want to get that going?
With with this change, I think in the timeline, I think we'll jump right on that.
Yeah, just um, that's up to you guys, but um, and the uh, oh, the other thing, are you removing any trees in the right of way?
No.
Please verify that.
Okay.
Especially if the grading is gonna be damaging any trees in the right of way because that is the town right of way that kind of shoots up there.
Sure. Um,
You see where I'm talking about, Evan?
Yeah.
In there, those are some town trees.
Yep, and we're gonna, we're gonna need to evaluate that with uh, changing that driveway location, so we we will.
Because uh, under our town law, um, you would have to go to the town board to remove those trees.
Okay.
So I would kind of recommend to you to try to avoid removing those trees unless they're dead, dying or something like that, but we can talk more about that.
Okay, appreciate it.
Um, and there's gonna be an easement for the lateral for the neighboring property, is that correct?
That's correct, and I apologize for not bringing that up. Um, this, this property was part of a subdivision from one fifty-five Summit Summit Drive just above. Um, and the intent is to um, stub a sewer connection, a four inch sewer connection, one single sewer connection um, that that landowner will uh, make application for. Um, with that, there will be a ten foot easement that runs on the east side of the property, um, allowing for that connection.
Is that ten foot easement wide enough?
We have to get into the final design plans of it, once we get that application. Um, but but I I think it is. We, we can verify that as well.
Cause it's not gonna be our easement, it's gonna be the easement between the two of them.
The private.
But it would be their problem.
Sure.
Thanks, I don't have any other questions, Bill.
Alright, thank you. Uh, other board members have have questions?
I don't have any.
Don't have any either.
Yeah, this is John. I saw there was a lot of discussion regarding sanitary sewer laterals and two and one and anyway, it was kind of confusing. So does the property up above one fifty-five summit, does that not have a sanitary sewer now? And this this uh, new house being built will take care of that situation, is that correct?
Correct. So the sewer, so the go, running parallel in this is um, a sewer extension um, to provide sewer to this property. Um, so when that is approved or moves forward um, that the stub would, a single stub would be provided for that property um, at one fifty-five Summit Drive.
Okay, thank you. Um, where does the the sanitary sewer um, the flow, does it flow to the east or to the west?
It was in the east.
East, okay. Thank you, towards Clayton Avenue, alright.
Correct.
Uh, tell me, is the is though domestic water being proposed, is that uh, enough pressure and large enough to provide for uh, fire protection sprinklers in the house?
Yep, uh, one of the engineers' comments was um, from from the town was to provide those calculations. We have them and will be providing them to uh, engineering.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Anyone else? Pam, Jason, you're all set.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm good.
Alright. Ken, any questions?
I'm all set, thanks.
Alright. Alright, um, thank you guys. And this is a public hearing, is there anyone attending the meeting tonight that cares to address this application?
FDC Scott Goddell has raised his hand.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Scott.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, you can.
Great, terrific. Um, good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to ask a couple questions. Um, I've been following this closely because as some of you guys know, uh, and Ramsey knows this, my ex-wife and I built a house in nineteen ninety-five on Summit Drive and we love Brighton's, we've been here a quarter century and we want to be here for another quarter century. I don't know if I can make it that far, but anyways, one of the things that we did when we first proposed building on Summit was we did have a a neighborhood meeting to apprise everybody in the area about what we were gonna do. So I think some of the unanswered questions for myself, um, and I'm not an engineer, but we're kind of curious about the laterals that are proposed to come up to Summit, it looks like it's only offering to pro- to provide sewer to one single house. So one of my questions is, has Tambian Ferrara, which is eight thirty Highland and one fifty-five Summit, have they offered to have a discussion with anybody else on Summit to see if they would like to tie in with these laterals? Um, I understand it would change the dimensions of the laterals. I'm, again, I'm not an engineer, but uh, some of us might like to tap into that. Uh, and have people talk to the neighbors and offer them this option. And a lot of us are on septic, I know it's on a, not a requirement, but if we can't or don't tie into laterals right now, could a stub be put in place where some of the neighbors or myself elect to tie into that stub in the future? So I I think to distill it down to a simple question, um, it sounds like it's only coming to one house, which I'm not even sure why it's coming to that house, because I don't think they're approved to have it at this point. Uh, but I'm not saying it wouldn't be a good idea, but how do we maybe get more of the neighbors involved in this?
Alright, um, thank you, Scott. I guess what I'll ask uh, Evan is um, Evan, could you, you know, I I heard a, I heard your description of this before, what is the what is the legal reason that you're even providing one uh, stub to the adjacent neighbor? And uh, does does Scott's question uh, have you, have you considered this or is this new, something you haven't heard before?
So this is new, I I have not heard um, you know, or or don't know if if Tom, I mean, clearly hit, Tom hasn't spoken to the neighbors up there, um, so that part I don't know. Um, also, you know, I would need the town to kind of guide us on, you know, legally, how would that move forward with multiple uh, properties? Um, I I do know that, you know, this was part of um, Tom's original property, um, and that Tom's original property, um, and that, you know, the easement was discussed as part of the sale. And, and to provide access through there, um, and legally, I, I, you know, the property, i- if. James Tabby, the owner of, of eight thirty allows for that, I believe, then it, it can move forward. Ramsey, I don't know if, if the town has any.
This is not something, uh, uh, for the town, as, um. As was stated, this property was owned by the same person that this lateral is for, he owns both lots. And as part of selling this lot, he's going to require an easement, so he can run a lateral down to the main in, uh, in South Clinton Avenue. The town has no s- uh, sanitary sewer study done for up on, uh, on Summit. Um, I have no idea what it would take to put a, a main, because we're not talking about constructing a main, we're just talking about a lateral. To one single family house, they will need to come into the town for that lateral, because it's an EPOD. And they will need to show how this lateral is connecting to the existing house. Um, if they want to make that connection, this is certainly reserving their right to do that.
Yeah.
This is right now is not a subdivision?
No, but I, I believe, I think I'm right on this Ramsey, um, tell me if I'm not, please. But I think they would still need to come into the town board to get approval for extension of that.
Yeah.
That lateral off the, uh, off the main line, so it's not like an automatic.
Uh, no, they, um, they would only need to get a district extension, have the property in the district, which I thought they might have done already.
Yeah, we have that process going, um, the petition is about to, uh, I think we.
I have not seen it yet before the town board, Ramsey, so.
Okay.
That was talked to them about that, Ken.
I do, like you said Ramsey, um, you know, it, it could be a lateral to serve one single property. If multiple properties do join in, then it becomes a main extension, like you said, which is a, a, a bigger, bigger picture project.
Yeah, no, that's much bigger project, and that we, you know. That you would need a, a lot, a lot of work, and I don't know if that's the way that you'd want to go about trying to get sewers up there.
Ramsey, how many, uh, this is a. Probably a silly question, but how many laterals? Can be. Supported, um. Within an easement, could they have, could there, rather than it being one pipe, could there be multiple pipes? In this easement, and I understand.
That I, that I don't know, normally what I have seen everyone having their own separate easement, but. Um, I'm not a real estate attorney, and that's not something I would want to advise them on.
Right, you'd also need to know, like, you know, from a sewer construction perspective, what, what you'd need. What the diameter of each of those laterals would need to be, how much space you need between the laterals, uh, we, I don't know that engineering.
Okay, so this, this parcel was transferred, sold to this Mr. Tabby with the condition that. He provide. You know, this easement for. For Mr. Farrar to, uh. To put this lateral in.
That is my understanding, I do not represent them, but that is my understanding.
Yeah, okay, so there was, it was, it's simply a, a one-to-one transaction, this is.
Private transaction that does not involve the town.
Yeah, okay.
Except that they need to get their approvals to, you know, make the connection.
And, and to Ramsey's earlier point, um, just because there's this agreement between these two private landowners. That doesn't mean that the town is necessarily going to approve the extension, um, the district extension for the lateral. And that's, you know, or that it's big enough to accommodate what the town might require.
Sure, all right. All right, and, uh, Scott, how approximately, is it the entire street that isn't served by sewer?
Yeah, so if I could offer an additional comment, as far as I understand, most, if not all of Summit is without sewers. And through the years, there, there hasn't been a united front on going for sewers. This may offer us an option, and, and at this point, I have more questions than either a pro or con statement. It could be good, it may not be good, you know, to be determined. And I understand that any lateral is kind of like a spoke off of a wheel. If, um, if you try to add additional houses, then that lateral will get bigger. As per the calculations of the engineers, so that's all we're trying to determine is. Can this lateral or several ladder, laterals serve two, three, four houses? Not my, you know, wheelhouse, not something I understand, but I think we're kind of going out of order. I think offering the option to people on Summit would be wonderful. You know, kind of like when we had our meeting twenty-five years ago, and we met with the neighbors and we said, what would you like to see? So I, I think I'd like to understand what Evan is proposing and what the options are. And if, if they make sense, great, if they don't, we're, you know, at least we understand it.
Uh, Scott, just, uh, just understand that when you came in, you were doing a four lot subdivision?
Correct.
This is a, this is a site plan to build a single family home, to, it is a little bit different. And to understand that the town has no plans, nothing, no plans ever discuss or showing. A sanitary main of the town going up the side of that hill.
Correct, understood.
Um, this is a lateral, it's a, it, it's private, the town has no say in what the private property owners. Were allowed to have happen on their property.
And is there any recommendation on how we learn more about the potential of bringing something up?
Um, you probably would want to get together with your neighbors and start looking at, hey, do we want to start getting into sanitary sewer district? And looking at the engineering options, I don't, that, none, that whole area doesn't have sanitary sewer.
Right, okay.
I mean, this is not, we've known about this problem for years and years. And, and the sanitary sewer is located in the same spot it was when you built your subdivision.
Right.
It hasn't changed.
Yeah, the only thing I see is there, there's potential for an option here for some, maybe not all of the houses on Summit, but for some of the houses.
Yeah, I understand, but maybe at the time we wanted to do when we did the subdivision, but that's going backwards.
Right.
But I would, what I would do is I would talk to your neighbors.
Okay, good, good.
Scott, any other, any other comments or questions?
Now, just, uh, if, if Evan can, you know, kind of address it with the town, that would be great.
What do you think? Are you gonna get in the picture?
All right, thank you, is there anyone else that cares to, uh, speak to this application? Jeff, anybody?
Nope, don't see anybody.
All right. All right, let's give that one last call, anybody else for?
Let me take a look, let me look, let me look.
All right. Okay, moving on, our, um, next application is twelve P. NB one dash twenty-one, the application of the University of Rochester for preliminary site plan approval. Preliminary EPOD approval and preliminary conditional use permit approval. For the sixty-one thousand three-story building, additional hundred parking spaces at two fifty River Road, also known as the. Laser Lab. Good evening.
Good evening, board members, I'm David Cox with Pastoral Associates. Also with me is Clayton Jones, uh, from U of R with some other, uh, U of R people. And some people from Canon of the architects, uh, but I'd like to have Canon, uh, give some, or, sorry, Clayton Jones. Uh, with you of our give some opening, uh, comments, and then I can go through the presentation.
Thank you, David, hopefully you can hear me okay?
Ken.
Excellent, good evening, members of the board, um, as David alluded to, I'm Clayton Jones, senior director of, uh, local government, community relations at the university. Um, as with all these presentations, we want to just really start out by thanking you, uh, for your time this evening and for allowing us to come before you again. Um, to talk about the laser lab, uh, the, the university really feels that the town's partnership i- in working with us on this project has been critically important. Um, we're so appreciative of, of all the interaction and the engagement from the staff level meetings to the public forums. That, that the town has a, a full understanding of the project, as well as our intentions and goals, uh, those are things we want to be really clear on. Uh, we want to ensure that, you know, all the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed, um, and your questions are answered. So, you know, we're thankful, uh, for the time and your level of interaction. And as it's been shown through the modifications we've made to the project over the past eight months. We, we truly value the feedback that we receive from the town, and we're certainly eager to engage with you this evening, uh, to move forward. We, we know the laser lab continues to be, uh, a world-leading research center, uh, that has significant impact across the world. As well as right here in the local economy, um, and we continue to be grateful that the facility is, is located right here in the town of Brighton. Um, so we look forward to the continued engagement and partnership. We're so appreciative of the time on tonight's agenda, um, and we look forward to the discussion. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to my colleague David back from Pat, back to Passero, uh, who will go into our plan, thank you very much.
Right, thanks Clayton. And good news for everyone on the call, I will have a shorter presentation tonight than I did at the last, uh, meeting, so. First, I just want to go through, and I will, I will repeat some things that I did say at the last meeting, because it is a public hearing. I just want to make sure, um, for the benefit of anyone who's tuned in to get the high level, high level things on the project. And also, which was brought up before, uh, the comment that we did submit this preliminary application prior to our last planning board meeting. So the documents you see aren't going to have any of those revisions that we talked about at the last planning board meeting. Um, so the plan is, you know, to gather any more remaining comments here. And then make another submission for the January, uh, which would address any comments the boards have brought up so far. Any town staff comments will be addressed, um, and any other agency comments. So that you'll get a, you know, everything should be all good, packaged up, uh, for the January meeting. So just to reiterate, uh, the preliminary application we made, uh, was, there was quite a bit in there. And I'll just go through quickly, just so you have a, an, you know, an idea of everything with submitted, uh, so we did submit the planning board application. Uh, which included the request for site plan approval, the conditional use permit, and the EPOD permit. Uh, we did submit a full environmental assessment form. Uh, we submitted an IPD code analysis, we also submitted an IPD finding statement matrix, which went line by line. Uh, looking at all the different items of that and addressed those, uh, we did submit a parking demand analysis. Uh, we submitted architectural drawings, uh, that were also approved by the ARB on nine twenty-eight, twenty-one. Uh, we submitted some, uh, potential future development plans for the LLE. And then we submitted some programming plans that really kind of showed why the building addition is where it is. Uh, we submitted the wetland delineation report that was done this year. We submitted the approved wetland jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps. Uh, we submitted a wetland ecological evaluation, which really looked at the quality of the wetlands. Uh, that was done by Environmental Resources LLC. Uh, we submitted a, a wetland plan, uh, which outlined some of the mitigation, it has since been revised. Um, we submitted our SHPO no impact letter, so the, there's no archaeological, uh, impact to this. For the, from this project. Uh, we submitted the fire apparatus access and fire hydrant worksheet. We submitted a comment response letter to all the stow, town staff comments received up until that date. Uh, we did, uh, receive the staff comments, uh, today, uh, so we will go through those and address those. Uh, we also submitted correspondence from the New York State DOT, the MCDOT. That both referenced that a, no additional traffic study is required for this building addition. Uh, we submitted a phase one, A, one B cultural resource. Inventory plan, uh, which that goes in hand in hand with that SHPO, uh, no sign off or no impact letter. And then, uh, finally, we issued the, uh, site plans, the preliminary site plans. And then just to kind of give a high level of where we have been, uh, so far with the town of Brighton and the engagement. Uh, on May twenty-fifth, we had a town staff workshop meeting. And then July twentieth, we went before this planning board for, with a concept submission. Or we submitted, sorry, uh, on that, and then we went before the board on August eighteenth. And then on nine seven twenty-one, we went before the conservation board. On nine fourteen twenty-one, we went back before the planning board. Nine twenty-eight twenty-one, we went before the architectural review board. Uh, ten twelve twenty-one, went for the conservation board. Uh, ten twenty twenty-one, we had another town staff workshop meeting. Then eleven seventeen, last month, we had our, uh, our last planning board concept meeting. And then on December seventh, we had a co, another conservation board meeting, and then tonight, uh, we're here for, uh, our first preliminary. Planning board meeting. All right, so now kind of just run through. Uh, the plans a little bit here. So, to make it, um, make sure I emphasize, the parking used to be, there used to be a hundred car parking lot. South of our proposed building addition, uh, with a loop road that went out and tied into imaging. Uh, that was one of the first concepts we had that we brought in, oh, perfect, uh, yeah, this is where we, we started. The process, and after meeting with the, with the planning board and the conservation board. It was, you know, that's a lot of woodlot impact, uh, there's an impact to the Vernal Pool, uh, you need to do something about that, you need to change that. Um, so we did revise that, and. Uh, we got rid of that loop road that went through the Vernal Pool. So then we just had the parking lot, and then it was, you know, hey, is there anything you can do with that parking lot, can you get it completely out of there? So we've removed that parking lot completely out of there, um, and that's when we put parking. Maybe if you can go to Jeff, go back to the cover sheet. Of the site plans. There we go, um, so there's some, we're putting some parking on the west side of the building, it's kind of hatched in, yep. We're adding some parking there, there's already a driveline there, uh, we're just adding parking, perpendicular parking off the driveline that's already there. So we're able to pick up a bunch of spots there, and then just to the south of there, there's already a drive aisle, we're adding some perpendicular parking there. And then on the east side of the site, there's, we're just adding some additional parking to the existing parking lot. So instead of having one giant, or not giant, but one hundred car parking space in the woodlot. We scattered it kind of on the east side and the west side of the site near existing parking. So that is a, a huge benefit, um, to having not near as much impact on the woodlot or environmental things. See, we can go to the next, uh, next page. So here's our, our site plan that has the zoomed in view of the, uh, of the building addition, do we have? So the building addition is in that gray area, right there, we're, we're just, uh, marking there. Just to the south of that, we do have a fire department turnaround. So that right there is for emergency access and fire departments to be able to turn in, and that is all per appendix D, meets those requirements. Um, we do have, there is kind of a, a little bit of a finger to that wetland area, uh, that we are proposing. Uh, to disturb and fill about point zero five acres of that existing wetland. Uh, and we, if not shown here, um, but we talked about the last meeting, that we're going to be adding some more wetland to the south. Um, yeah, right in that area, so we're going to be adding in point one seven acres of new. Uh, new wetland in that area, so that the, the total wetland area will be zero point five five acres. Which brings the wetland back up to the acreage, uh, that was part of the IPD. And then also as part of that mitigation plan is when the. Wetland biologist went out there to look at the existing wetland and judge the quality of the wetland. He said it was, it was low quality, um, mainly due to the part of phragmites, which is an invasive species. Uh, that was really kind of taking. that was really kind of taking over and phragmites really degrades habitat quality. So as part of our mitigation plan, it is to remove those phragmites and, you know, take to a landfill, get those off-site and then replant with native wetland plantings to increase the habitat of that area. As well as make some additional wetland mitigation measures such as adding some, some tree logs and some boulders, amphibians like to overwinter under logs or boulders. So we're going to add some of those components for the, for that. And then as well as adding some low-mo, no-mo upland area mitigation that's kind of to the right of the vernal pool, at the top right, there's a kind of a hatch there. Keep going to the right, Jeff. Yeah, that's kind of, you know, keep going a little bit more, there's a big kind of weird look, yeah, that thing. That's going to be wildflower and no-mo area. So that creates enough, a nice transition from woodlot to a higher grass, taller grass, all the way to that stormwater pond. So that gives a nice area for amphibians to traverse from the woodlot vernal pool to that stormwater pond where they're not going into a mowed grass area where they have a little more protection with some taller grasses. That the, a lot of amphibians like a, a woodlot near a taller grass or, or taller meadow area. So the, when we submit the, the next round of revised plans, it will show that additional point one seven acres of wetland that we are adding, so that there's that total, total of point five-five acres of wetland. You can go to the next slide. So that's just the existing conditions, we can go to the next, next one. Yep, this is our, our tree survey. This shows all the, all the trees in this area, in the area kind of in the gray hatch is the area that's going to be disturbed where the trees were coming down. We do have ninety-three trees that are being taken down in this area. And later on in the, the set, you'll see, we do have a well, or a tree mitigation plan to offset those. Next slide. So this plan is the utility plan. Also, there's a gas main that we're going to extend from East River Road down to the building addition. There's currently a, a loop, a water main loop that goes all the way around the Laser Lab building. And that loop is going to go right through this building addition, so we're relocating that water main around the addition. And as well as, we will be making a water main connection to the West Henryetta Road, a higher pressure zone. And that will take more water from the, the higher pressure zone and will free up extra capacity to the lower pressure system, mainly the residents to the south. So making that connection is going to free up additional capacity and help the area to the south. There's already a sanitary sewer just east of the building, so we're just going to run a new stub tied right into that sanitary sewer. And then drainage, there is a infiltration, or I mean a bio-retention area east of the, east of the building, north of the vernal pool, that the roof drainage will go to for green infrastructure treatment. And then it will discharge to the existing stormwater pond that's just to the east of it or to the right of it. All right, we can go to the next slide. So this is just the grading plan, not, not a whole lot to comment there, we can go to the next slide. All right, so here is this landscaping and tree mitigation plan showing so that we were removing trees in the, in the back of the property that are all clumped together. And we're taking those and proposing trees all over the, the whole Laser Lab property, really beautifying the entire site, filling in gaps. Or anything that's lacking landscaping to really fill it in and spread it out over the whole, the whole campus. So those trees will be a lot more visible from the public and the people who use the Laser Lab in the parking lot are going down East River Road. My next slide. And then the, the next few plans, just our detailed site plans for those parking additions on the west side and the east side. The west side has its own green infrastructure treatment as well as the west side has its own green infrastructure treatment. So those are kind of standalone. So that kind of sums up the site plans. And then Jeff, could you go to the architectural plans? And then I will be handing it over to Mike DeLuca with Canon to just briefly talk about the architecture.
Mike, we can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Mike.
No, you're unmuted, but I don't know if it's picking up your computer mic.
Are you guys able to hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, I plugged in, sorry about that. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to present the project to this committee again, the board, we, we're looking forward to the conversation. Can we start with eighty-nine? So as we've talked in the past, the project is located in the southeast corner of the existing Laser Lab. And it's in addition, in addition to that area to support the adjacent laboratory spaces that will use this space to assist us with its research. So the pro, the project is very specifically located at that location to support the laboratories in that area and also the mechanical systems that are adjacent to it. So it's informed by the existing conditions of the existing building and to benefit its research. The project is also situated in a way that it is not visible from the road. And it, and we've provided a few sketches, as you see on this sheet with view one. And the view one idea is the existing building's there in gray. We took, we removed the existing landscape there and showed it in a distance as what you would see from East River Road. This is simply took, taken from a Google map, doesn't have the contours or any of the landscape. So the lower view on the lower left is an existing view and the existing building is there. And in yellow, we showed where that building would be. This was taken in, you know, in a time where the trees don't, aren't really having any foliage on it. But again, that building is way off in the distance and you'd have to be, as with this doc, this view, up higher from, and instead of being in a car, floating above the car to see it. The upper right two views also would reiterate that. So the building is tucked back, but at the same time, we're, want to make sure we address the architecture in a way that is supportive of the existing building, if you can go to slide ninety. And in, in doing so, maintain the existing materials of brick, glass and metal panel that was already on the existing building. In the intent of also trying to advance the character of it, but maintain the, the, the quality of that space. So as you'll see here with this rendering, we have curtain wall on the, what would be the east side. That looks into open office area to give daylight to the researchers that are in that area. On the back left, where you see the brick and the vertical windows, that is to a hallway that runs along that southern end. Between the existing building and our, that curtain wall is what we call a light wedge. And that would be a large gathering space that would occur within the building for the existing building and the new building to have its users congregate in that area. Also with this space, you can see with this rendering, the LLE and the users of LLE do like to congregate outside. So this is an early rendition of, I'm showing outdoor seating that would be in that area. If you could go to ninety-one, please. This is from the southeast side, looking to the north, northwest. Thank you. The curtain wall you can see on the right is, is as was shown in the previous slide. Again, the brick, the existing brick with vertical ribbon, vertical windows show, align with the hallways. And the, the tall gray is a metal panel. And the intent with that metal panel is that if there's a future expansion to this property, that it aligns, it's an easy material to take off, would not be long-term and permanent on the building if there's an addition. We also aligned window wall, of windows, vertical windows in this wall with the hallways with the full intent of if there is an addition to this area, that they would not have to do significant work to the existing building, it would be an attachment. The brick that you see on the left, that, the, just the left of that, thank you, is a stair tower. We're adding an additional floor on that stair tower, will maintain the existing brick. And that will be supporting the storage and mechanical space that's on the third floor of the building. If you go to ninety-two, please. These are elevations, essentially the same facades that we're just talking to you. The top is the south facade, you'll see those two vertical window slits in there that align with hallways within the existing building. And you'll see that this is a three-story addition with mainly mechanical and storage space on the upper floors, laboratories on floors one and two. On the lower, the lower plan, which would be the east elevation, again, maintain the existing brick, trying to maintain the glazing with some reference to the existing building in that process. And again, we'll have cast stone sills, similar to the existing building. Campus brick throughout curtain wall and the dark gray metal panel, which again is consistent with the existing property. So the intent of the design is to complement the existing building, but not just be too far off from the vernacular that's already on campus and at this building. And again, the, from the community's view, they won't be able to see this property from the street. It'll be set back and vegetated around in a way that won't be visible. So thank you, David, I think I'll turn it back to you.
Jeff, you can go, keep scrolling through the slides. Go, go back up to that, that kind of the LLE development plan, that ninety-seven. Okay, so, before we talk about this slide, just, right now, I'm going to kind of get into, you know, some of the things that the planning board brought up last time that we were here. One of them was RTS. So the U of R did reach out to you, to RTS. And RTS provided some, some stats and some information. They said from twenty nineteen, so this is pre, pre-COVID, the U of R Medical Center had, for the year, had a hundred and fifty-three thousand riders that went to there. For the U of R River Campus, there was nine thousand riders. And then for the UR South Campus, which would be the imaging Laser Lab here, there was only four hundred and ninety-six riders. So about one point five people per day to the south campus. So they reiterated that, that was the, the main reason for removing that bus stop. And they also reiterated that there is a bus stop on West Henryetta Road, kind of where the imaging building is. So it's about a point four mile walk from that bus stop to the Laser Lab, which is about a six to seven minute walk. And, you know, their point was that, that's, you know, not that bad. And that the, the medical campus, some of the parking for the medical campus, you would have a much farther walk than six to seven minutes to get to the building. So they said that they were going to issue a, a letter, kind of highlighting that. It looks like Justin has his hand up, I don't know if he wants to comment on that.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate that again, that we did, the university did not pull out the bus service. We were paying for that additional service for the four hundred annual riders. That we are more than happy to work with the town of Brighton to sit down and directly interface, discuss with RTS to restore the service. And we were, we were subsidizing, literally subsidizing that service. RTS chose to pull the service through a public hearing process, which would include a notification to the town of Brighton. And we were not in favor of elimination of that service.
Could you give your name for the record, please?
Oh, my apologies, I just, with the Zoom and all that, Justin Fallon, all our executive director of planning and project management at University of Rochester.
Thank you.
You bet.
And then the, the other thing was, you know, at the last planning board meeting, we were talking about this plan here. And we will be submitting a, you know, a slightly modified revised plan that addresses some of the comments that were, that were brought up at the last planning board meeting. One of them was, you know, kind of a breakdown of the, the differences between the twenty fifteen plan and this plan. And I can just go over some of the stats. So this plan that we have is proposing about forty-five thousand square feet less of parking area. So it's less impervious for parking. It was around twenty thousand square feet less for buildings and structures. So less, less impervious there. The woodlot disturbance was, is two point three-four acres less for this plan versus the, the two thousand and fifteen plan. And this plan also has three point five-seven acres more green space. So as well as, this plan continues to have a, a wildlife connection from that wetland vernal pool area to the south that then could go east or west to really tie in that wildlife where the route twenty fifteen plan had a, a road from the imaging building over and had a lot more parking and things like that that would, you know, kind of block off that, that habitat path, I, I guess you would say. The other thing that was brought up was a conservation easement discussion. So the U of R is proposing a hundred-foot wide conservation easement across the, the rear of the property along those neighboring properties. So it'd be around seven hundred eighty-six feet long or so by a hundred feet. So that would go from Merlin Drive all the way to that kind of road that goes down from the imaging. So that, in that block there, that would obviously put into permanent conservation easement and would protect that, those woodlot and the neighborhood to the south.
Are there restrictions there of a hundred feet now?
There is, there is a buffer now.
Required by the, by the incentive zone?
Yes.
And you're saying the conservation easement is how wide?
One hundred feet.
But that area is already protected.
So the conservation easement, obviously, is more, more strict and more, more protective, I would say.
I think the conservation was for the new areas and, and mitigation for the areas that you were disturbing that you weren't supposed to. We have a hundred-foot buffer already established. The conservation easement over that restricted area isn't doing anything work because you can't do anything in that area now as it is.
Looks like Jared, oh, okay.
I'll defer to Jared.
Jared Lust has his hand up.
Good evening, everyone. Let me turn the video on, I have sometimes unstable, I hope you can see me, I'm seeing the plan. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Again, the conservation easement, Ramsey, again, you asked about a conservation easement. The university is, is willing to discuss the conservation easement with you. I think the hope is to sit down and talk about what type of restrictions are in place and how we can enhance those restrictions. I think we'd like to have that, that, that discussion with you.
I think what we need, Jared, is probably a proposal from you guys to start with. And I would recommend looking at a conservation easement from the south of the LEE parking and service area is where that conservation would want to go start and head south to the hundred-foot buffer that's been already established would be my suggestion. But I'll leave that to you guys to submit your proposal when you submit, we submit.
May, may I ask feedback from the planning boards as the decision-makers in this process in terms of what their expectations are?
My understanding in our last discussion.
Actually, can I, can I just step in here, David? This is Ken Gordon, I'm sorry. Now is not the appropriate time for planning board members to be commenting. So this is a time for the applicant to make their presentation. So this is a time for the applicant to make their presentation. Go ahead and make a presentation. It, it seems, it seems as if we really don't have your application. Complete, at least with respect to the details of the conservation easement. And, you know, I welcome, uh, uh, the opportunity to review as Jer- as, as Ramsey's indicated, whatever you propose. Um, so now is not the time for the conservation board to comment on something that you haven't even yet submitted.
I understand that and I respect what you're saying, Ken. But the, the town of Brayden introduced the, the conservation use in concept in earlier discussions. And given the planning board are decision makers, I guess it would be mindful for at least. We would want to respect the planning board's, you know, view informally or not. I guess I'll defer to the planning board on that in terms of expectations around what would be a sufficient conservation easement. Since we also have to take that back to our board of trustees.
I also think there's more information that's needed because we don't even know the full areas of, of disturbance. But, um, I think I stand with Ken on his comments. It's a proposal for you. Members have something they want to say. There will be an opportunity.
And I will just, I will just let you know, I mean, we, we haven't commented. Uh, we haven't had the board comment on any of the proposals that have been before yet. We're still in the public hearing phase. So why don't we?
But this is a preliminary hearing, so is it not, is it not the time to actually discuss such ideas?
So you're, you're absolutely right. It's a hearing for you to present to the board and for the board to listen. That's what a hearing is. We listen to information that you present. And then later on in the agenda, the board will be discussing what action it wishes to take. It'll talk about probably many of these issues. Now is not the time.
I'll defer you, Ken, and I was expecting the board to be more active than, um, than passive, but I'll defer to you.
Well, the board's very active. You just, uh. Wait and see when we have a discussion, but now is your time to present. If there's nothing further you have to present, we can close, uh, we can move on to the next matter. And, um, if you have anything further that any one of your team wants to present, I'd urge you to do it at this time.
Ken, I appreciate your position on that and, and obviously at the last meeting. Uh, Ramsey asked the question whether we would consider a conservation easement. Think that, I think the university's come back and said, yes, they will consider a, a conservation easement. I, I, I think they've made movement here, uh, and, and I think they want the opportunity to discuss. Where staff et cetera thinks the conservation easement should go. Again, as, as, uh, Justin indicated, this has to go back to the board of trustees to convey land. And so I think there needs to be a discussion before we can actually propose something. We'd like to sort of have that discussion and, and discuss, be able to go back to the trustees. It's not something that we can propose and go back and forth. Again, we, we want the opportunity to, to work with the town and the planning board on what they're thinking. So that we can get back to the board of trustees and work through that process. It, it's not a chicken or egg thing, and I understand the desire, uh, for, to have us propose it. I, I think that as I stated initially, there was, there was a request to be able to have a workshop and discuss the merits. I know, uh, Ramsey just indicated he preferred that it go from the parking lot south. I think there's, I, I think that's, that's a discussion point, but I, I think in this circumstance, given. That, that dynamics here, that a meeting to discuss it i- is appropriate. And, and if staff's going to lead that discussion instead of the planning board, then we'd appreciate the opportunity to talk to you. About the specifics of the site and why you're thinking that way, so that we can again go back to the university. Uh, board of trustees, et cetera, and, and discuss that and be prepared to come back and make the suggestion. Just, uh, offering a conservation easement without more isn't particularly productive, given the circumstances here. It's, it's not as though it's a, it's a homeowner or a particular property owner dealing with it is complicated by the board of trustees issue.
Well, I, I will have to say, as it was well documented at the beginning of this meeting. All the time we have spent on this project, discussing about identifying the impacts. And getting you guys to submit a proposal for mitigation, which we are still waiting for. Uh, we do need your proposal. Um, staff did give you a very direct response to what staff was feeling and suggesting about the conservation easement. As the town attorney has just said. Later in the evening, the planning board will discuss this matter. It is, you're right, up to the board. The board will discuss it later. Attorney has said, I would suggest that you go back to your presentation, please.
Is that a closed door discussion or a part of the public hearing?
Oh, absolutely open.
Discussion. David, I'll turn it back to you.
Uh, yeah, I have nothing, uh, further, uh, to add as part of my presentation. And unless there was something from U of R that, uh, they wanted to add in.
We look forward to hearing the, uh, the, um. Um, discussion points between staff and the planning board. We want to be cooperative and transparent in the process. Understanding that whatever comes out of this, we need to take it back to our board of trustees. And certainly want to go through and identify an acceptable conservation easement. That would, uh, meet the requirements for mitigation above and beyond the buffer requirements. With, of course, knowing that we have to take it back to the board of trustees for final approval.
All right, um. Uh, David, you say you're, you're done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. That is the last, uh, public hearing for this evening, uh, at this point.
Uh, we have questions, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, this is a.
And then we have to open it up.
The last, uh, public hearing, uh, twelve P N B one. Yes, twenty one is a public hearing. Is there anyone who cares to address this application?
I might have some questions too, Bill. I never got a chance to answer any questions for the record.
Yeah, okay, well, let's, let's, yeah.
They made their presentation. Are you comfortable with that? Um, it is a public hearing and I do want to create the.
No, no, I'm not, no, I'm not comfortable and I'm not comfortable with the direction that the, uh. Uh, that the applicant took in the last, uh, ten minutes here. So Ramsey, why don't you go ahead and ask your questions?
I just have a couple of questions just to you. I won't spend a lot of time. Um, the, as, as discussed, the submitted plans are incomplete. And just so you know, um, and they do not contain sufficient information. As additional comments will be developed as the plans progress, so I just want you guys to know that. The, uh, the other question I have is it, you guys, have you guys revised the current plan? And is it your plans to submit that to this board?
Yes, we will be submitting, uh, revised documents to this board for the January meeting.
And will that current plan, what you're going to be submitting, will all the potential impacts of the proposed modifications to that current plan? Be identified and medications presented?
Yeah, Justin has his hand up.
Yes, Ramsey, our attention will be to make revisions based on our, uh, in meeting with yourself and the, and or the town attorney or anyone else. Begin to receive, uh, fe- feedback, valuable feedback, constructive feedback in terms of how we can. Uh, make a proposal that better meets the expectations of the planning board. Again, the intention is not here to be adversarial, it's just to go through the process and understand. At what point of interactions are proper through the public hearing process, through staff, and then taking it back to members of the planning board. Um, and then, you know, what's informal and informal. I'm new to the area and new to the process, so apologies if anyone's taken this out of serial. But we do want to respond to that and then, and go back to you with a updated proposals in January based on your feedback.
Uh, I'm sorry, so that's a no or a yes?
That is a yes, we'll make a updated proposal based on staff feedback.
Which you've already gotten and you'll get that in writing by our comments. It is, uh, once again, your proposal to make. What's that?
We look forward to making a revised, uh, proposal accordingly.
Um, the other thing is I had already said we'll need to do, uh, uh, seek lead agencies. So depending on what you submit will probably depend on who will be lead agency for this project.
Will the town of Brayden form its own review or will it go actually defer to the state?
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question, say.
Yeah, yeah. So. You have the right guy asking the questions. Please, uh, David, would you answer the question?
The, the, the town of Brighton will be the lead agency.
That's what I was asking. You have the ability to do so under state law, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, so, so if I, if I could just speak to this briefly, I think, um. Depending on what your application shows, what changes ultimately you settle on that you want to make from this. Approved IPD, um. The lead agency will either be the planning board, the board year before right now. Or possibly the town board, depending upon how much needs to be revised with the IPD itself. Uh, which was a, um, proposal that went before the Brighton Town Board. So it could be the Brighton Town Board that could be your lead agency, likely. I think the way that, um, we're thinking now is probably the planning board from what we've seen.
Apologies, I was confusing SCAS with secret reviews, so my apologies.
Right, so, so our, so it's, it's going to be a town board. Whether it's the town board or whether it's the Brighton Planning Board is yet to be determined. But it'll be helpful to have your full and complete proposal so that we can. You know, lay it there and understand everything that you're proposing to do. That is different than what the IPD has approved by the town board and the site development as approved by the planning board. Was originally.
May I ask a clarifying question then regarding if, if we propose a conservation easement from the owner's side? Would that then be considered to be a change to PD rather than tied to the specific development, uh, proposal?
Um, no, not necessarily, but a conservation easement is something that you enter into. With the town of Brighton, um, and it would be the, for the town board.
Yeah, it would be for the town board to recommend. I understand that for, as a.
Authorize for lead agency purposes under seeker, that doesn't mean that the town board would need to be lead agency just because there's a conservation.
Okay, good. Just thank you for.
To them, once we know what your proposal is, just like you have someone that you have to go to, I would need to do the same thing, Mr. Diller.
Yep, yeah, thank you. I appreciate you, uh, educating me on that fact.
I have two questions regarding the presentation. Um, if, if you guys could go to page ninety five of your. Uh. Yes, okay, so I, in reading the correspondence and stuff that went back, there's been some discussions about. The wetland and the fact you've gone partly into the wetland and the conservation board has pushed back and said that it'd be. They would like mitigation somewhere, and I think you've agreed to do that. I just wanted to clarify one thing. So both you and the conservation board and the people involved are clear. Could you go to the next, um, slide now? Okay, so that area there, the, I think the graded lines are the area disturbance. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that you propose some sort of mitigation for that eventually?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, just so we don't end up discussing it later. The reason that area seems to be larger than I would expect is because if you go to the next slide. You have included that future access road as part of that disturbance. Is my assumption correct?
So we're, it's for more for constructability, uh, to get equipment around the building. And we do have some utilities that go around the building, uh, so it'd be very difficult not to, to. Constructability wise, not to disturb that, that well end area.
But if you did put that future access road in, it would be going through that area that you already had identified as being disturbed.
Yes, correct.
Okay, that was the one thing I wanted to clarify. Now, the other question more interest, the other one is, and it's on the same exact picture, because I, hearing the more recent discussion, I'm starting to get a little confused. You had said that you had no plans. For any construction beyond to the south of the proposed, uh, parking lot shown on your future plan. That that was this, that's one reason this has less disturbance, that you're not planning any construction south of, yeah, where your cursor is.
That, yeah, that's correct, you know.
Okay.
Per the best of our knowledge today.
Yeah, well, so the, the goal is then to reduce the, the development footprint that's in the IPD as a concept plan. So that the areas south of that would not be for future development. That will be limiting to this particular proposal and then anticipating a second phase for the E P O, E P Opal laser. Um, and then, you know, what we have to have requirements for fire access and some parking. But specifically reducing the, what was the understood development footprint under, under the concept plan that was incorporated into the PD.
Yeah, I understand. I'm just saying that this new plan, assuming you build it out to everything you're showing on the potential. You don't have plans to go beyond that into the area that currently is shown undisturbed.
Yeah, that's correct. And hence the discussion, which was, again, I understand I'm speaking.
Okay.
More and I appreciate that folks are informing of this around the question of what is a sufficient. Uh, conservation easement to meet the requirements or at least the concerns of mitigation.
Okay.
And I think that's, that's where we had left the, the last meeting was a discussion of this particular plan. Where the square footage that you're showing of building and the circulation and parking required. To support, uh, this plan and, uh, current, current addition and future additions. And how that compared to the, to the IPD in the lower right corner. And, you know, so this particular plan, we all saw that our last meeting. As being an improvement over the original IPD plan. Um, where you're not building parking garages. There may be square footage of buildings that end up someplace else in the IPD. But you wouldn't necessarily need the volume of parking that was shown. And, and therefore, you know, I think everybody finally realized, you know, what you're proposing. Currently with this plan versus what the IPD showed. And it was after the discussion that, that indicated this was your intended. Build out of this particular section that Ramsey said, would you be willing to put. A conservation easement on the land to the south. Um, knowing that this would probably be the, the intended full build out. We would receive substantial, uh, benefits from an environmental standpoint. Buffer retention of woodlot, um, protection of habitat. In this particular area and knowing that possibly that additional square footage that may have been. Uh, thought of for this area would, would be then going someplace else on, on campus.
That's correct. You said that very succinctly, Mr. Price, and that's the attention. So it's a combination of the conservation easement, however that's defined, and we'll workshop that with your staff. And then, then the trying to enhance and mitigate disturbance for the area that's understood to be wetland, however that's defined. Um, under town of Brighton versus Army Corps of Engineers to enhance that area. So that is a net gain, at least in terms of, both in terms of habitat, but also then, um. Providing substantial permanent buffering above and beyond what's required between our development footprint and the neighbor's.
Yeah. So I, I, I think we were, we're all pretty energized over, over the proposal. And the, and the possibility of accomplishing a lot of goals that everybody had with, with this. And it's, uh, you know, I guess you do have to, we would ask you to go back and. And think about, you know, how far off the south edge of that parking area, would it be reasonable that we could? Um, you know, start a conservation easement. Um, no, you can't answer, you know, all things that might happen in the future. Um, but I think there's a point there somewhere, uh, below the, or the south of that parking line. That, that's something, you know, that a conservation easement could begin. And, um, I think you want to just work with, uh, with David and, and between yourselves and figure out. Where is it, where is that reasonable? It still allows us flexibility. But knowing that, uh. Um, we're kind of achieving the, uh, square footage needed in this particular section. For the future of the laser lab is being achieved.
And there's one other, one other thing that we discussed. And there's one other, one other thing that we discussed, and I, I, I'm very bad with names, and I apologize. It was the woman that was at the last meeting, was, the point was some of the areas of mitigation you have there, if they're completely isolated from all other natural areas, then they provide no mitigation. So the conservation easement, the advantage of it was, and I don't know if, if David, you could move the cursor, but if you put it on the, the infamous, yeah, you would need, you would want at least some path south. Yes, yeah, so you'd want, you leave some, I would, I would think you want some minimum border there, because yes, providing you, you're.
Yeah, so I understand what you're saying. So I'm actually trained as a landscape architect, and I've done this kind of work before, and, and actually been, and worked in similar roles Ramsey has at different municipalities on the West Coast. So in terms of landscape ecology and wildlife mitigation and corridors, you want to have connected habitats like that, that makes sense, and certainly that's something we would want to work through. And I understand from your staff's perspective, they can only work to what's presented, they can't advise because of liability and other considerations. We certainly want to work in partnership with that. We do understand there's limitations to what staff can advise on. They typically need to react to what's presented based on the IPD and app of a code, and then any considerations being expressed here by the planning board.
Do any other board members have, have questions? John, are you good? Jason, all set?
Yeah, I'm good so far. Thank you very much.
All right. Pam?
I don't have anything additional to add. Thanks.
All right. Karen?
Could you go over again the increase in employees that is anticipated to be happening in the laser lab over time and what the anticipated phasing of that is, please?
Clayton would probably be the best person to talk about that. Milton Schup from the LLE.
You seem. Your name for the record, please.
Milton Schup, Laboratory for Laser Energetics, project manager for this building project. We are currently estimating on the order of fifty people to be occupying the new lab office building. I don't remember the exact projections. I can't even recall where we actually included that documentation in any submittals, but it was certainly over the first five years of the life of the building, maybe even earlier than that, but that's the rough timeframe. And that's only for the lab office expansion that is before you. That does not address any of the potential future areas.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Ramsey, you're all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, and Ken, you're all set?
Well, like I said before, I'm just looking to see them complete the plans and submit the revisions, and then I think we'll all have a lot more questions.
All right. All right, so I jumped the gun on the, on the public comment side, but now I open it up to anybody in the audience that cares to ask a question or discuss this application. Have you seen anybody?
Nope, I don't see anybody.
All right. All right. Okay, folks, thank you very much, everybody from Nastro and U of R. Please stick around. We'll be, we're going to start our deliberations and discussion of the, of the applications. Is everybody good to continue?
Yeah.
All right, okay.
I'm good.
Everybody's good. All right. Move on. All right, let's go back to application twelve P O one twenty-one. This is Premium Mortgage Corp. For the generator at twenty-five forty-one Monroe Avenue. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing.
That's Altman.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's Bob Cox Steiner seconding.
All right, any discussion? Ramsey, would you call the roll on that, please?
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Fader.
Aye.
Elaney.
Aye.
Babcock Steiner.
Aye.
Wasowski.
Aye.
Motion passes, hearings closed.
Okay. Anybody care to make a motion on this?
I move the board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff and the board approves.
Hey, this should be tabled. It's my recommendation.
The first one, twelve P O one.
I'm sorry, I was jumping to the next application. You got me back on focus here.
I move the board adopts a negative declaration prepared by town staff and the board approves the application twelve P zero one twenty-one based on testimony given, plans submitted, and the seven conditions.
I'll, I'll second. Delaney.
Probably good to say your name when you're moving or seconding, just so we can keep track of it. Thank you, Pam. Second. No, you're calling roll, okay.
Okay.
John?
Aye.
Babcock Steiner.
Aye.
Elaney.
Aye.
Fader.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Altman.
Aye.
Approved with conditions.
Very good. Thank you. Bring this to application twelve P O two dash twenty-one. Application of FSI Construction, Frankenvergia, three thirty B H L T L Partners. Preliminary and final site plan approval, EPOD permit and demolition review and approval. This is a thirty-three hundred Brighton Hundred, a town line road. I think we have a recommendation to table. Report.
Dave Fader moves that the board tables the application twelve P zero two twenty-one based on the testimony given and plans submitted. The thirty-eight items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
There's one thing I would recommend that condition number thirty-six be deleted. It was a holdover from the last time we reviewed this application and is no longer needed.
I have no problem with that.
Babcock Steiner seconds?
Babcock Steiner seconds.
Any further discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Altman.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Fader.
Aye.
Elaney.
Aye.
Babcock Steiner.
Aye.
Wasowski.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Application ten P N B two dash twenty-one. The application of James Tabby for preliminary site plan approval and preliminary EPOD permit. That eight thirty Highland Ave.
I have a question for staff regarding their report. I'm curious, did, I know that, that we're probably going to table this, but I was wondering if you want to go ahead and make the negative declaration and the decision on recreational land tonight?
No, because I need to, it is a type one action, and one of the things I was going to add is that we need to establish lead agency.
Okay. Then in that case, in that case, David Fader, then I will move the board tables the application ten P N B two twenty-one based on testimony given, plans submitted, and the I think it's wrong, and the additional information outlined in the planning board report, so that we can have a determination of significance and have a complete application. And I would have to look at the exact number of items.
And there are twenty-nine in the report. I have the thirtieth. If I could, the planning board should establish lead agency pursuant to seeker as a thirtieth requirement.
And I don't have a problem with adding that.
Second.
Okay.
Babcock Steiner seconds.
One, one question before the call on this. Who, who is a type one action, but is there any involved agencies? Who, who are the other?
There's the Water Authority, and there's going to be pure partners because there's a new main being run.
Main, okay. All right, thank you. Just wanted to.
Yeah, because then I wouldn't have to coordinate it. The less work, but.
Understood. Okay, thank you. Please call the roll and the motion in the second.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Aye.
Fader.
Aye.
Elaney.
Aye.
Babcock Steiner.
Aye.
Wasowski.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The last action for tonight, well, before signs will be twelve P N B one dash twenty-one, the University of Rochester for site plan approval, preliminary EPOD permit approval, and preliminary conditional use approval. At, at this point, let's, does anybody have, want to make a motion to table the application?
I can do that.
Okay.
That David Fader, I move the board tables the application twelve P N B one dash twenty-one based on testimony given and plans submitted, and the thirty-four items of additional information outlined in the planning board report are requested to make a determination of significance and to have a complete application.
Is there a second?
Babcock Steiner seconds?
Babcock Steiner seconds.
Prior to the vote, let's just see if there's any, any outstanding discussion on this or any anything that's perceived differently by members of the board than where our discussion kind of ended here tonight. Particularly with the elements of, you know, the drawing that is still up and in front of us being what we understand to be both the current application as well as the potential longer range, future expansion of the facility. And how that, this proposal compares to the master plan that was approved, I believe David Cox went through some of the variances or the differences between things like disturbance and building square footage and impervious surface things, items in the initial part of the presentation, and we do realize that this application had been submitted prior to our, our meeting of last month, therefore, there's a little bit of catching up with the, with some of those comments and clarifications of some of the items between the, the master plan and the currently proposed plan. So I, does everybody believe we've given some direction on, you know, how to perceive, and I'm sorry, how to proceed with thinking through a conservation easement and where that, where that might best be, be placed on the property? Looking for any, any thoughts that everybody has?
I, I guess my question is, is, is there a scenario where you know, maybe there's a preliminary, or I, I'm just wondering if there is, what are, what are the, the situation where a workshop would be appropriate? I guess, Ramsey, that's sort of my question.
We've had a number of workshops. I don't know what more we can discuss at this point. I, I've shared what my thoughts are multiple times in the workshops and in, in the reviews that we've had with this board.
Okay, I, I.
Right now, we just need to start to, you know, get a proposal from them based on what they've heard from us, and I mean, I, I give them my thoughts. If they don't want to do that, then they need to come back with something different. I think Bill did a pretty good job of summarizing it. It is not our intention to box them in.
Okay, well.
Something they need to take a hard look at and give us a proposal.
I, I was curious, because I know we've done workshops in the past, but I also think that, given the discussions we have, it's, it's pretty clear what our desire is.
Yeah, and we've had numerous workshops on this thing.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
And we didn't get very far with them, so it's, at this point, we are where we are.
Other board members?
Yeah, this is John. You know, it's finally going in the right direction. And it's a lot better planned than what the original IPD from twenty fifteen was, that had, that didn't have the, the wildlife car that this one does. So at least it's finally going in the right direction. It's it's not bad.
Jason, did you have thoughts?
Generally agree. I think I want to see a final plan submitted, but I think, you know, we provided them decent guidance on what we want to see. I think it is going in the right direction, so.
Yeah, okay, Pam?
I don't, I don't think I have a lot of additional to add than what's already been said.
All right, Karen?
I'm set. Thank you.
All right. All right.
Bill? It's Ken.
I can.
So just to add my perspective from the legal side on this issue of the conservation easement. The no build areas, including the
Then we're not hearing you.
Essential part of the determination understood by the.
Ken, we're not hearing you.
How about now?
Yeah.
Nothing, anything?
Oh, now you're good right now.
All right, let's try it again. Bet you heard my phone ringing too. So the no build areas that were part of the the no build areas in the wetlands and the uplands were an essential part of the determination of significance and the findings that were made by the town board in approving this IPD. And so the idea that, at least I understood as counsel for the conservation easement that was discussed but not detailed previously was that it would provide some mitigation for what would be building in, at least in some part, or disturbance to some extent in those no build zones, in the wetlands and the uplands. If all that the U of R is going to propose is a hundred-foot conservation easement in the very same area that is being proposed as that already is covered by the hundred-foot buffer, that is not, in my opinion as counsel, any kind of additional mitigation. And I would be very hard pressed to make a recommendation to this board or any board that is lead agency, that that doesn't change in an essential way the findings and significance of the environmental impacts of what is being proposed. So I, from what I am looking at, the proposal that is put forth by the university. the proposal that is put forth by the University of Rochester needs to be something more than what was already previously approved in order for it to be considered to be any kind of mitigation of what it is that they're planning to change. So I just wanted to put that out there, I know the university's listening, but I also want that in the board's head as it considers what conservation easements would be acceptable to the board.
Yeah. Okay. I, I, I do believe that both the U of R representatives and their consultants have kind of heard the message and possibly, you know, I, I, I get this, you know, whoever, whoever goes first loses concept on things like you know, land, you know, conservation easements and other things, but I, I think if they go back and work out and just kind of understand what you know, how this can work as a, as an environmental system and as a as a facility system for their needs. And, and, you know, honestly evaluate it. We'll come back with, with something that's certainly more than a hundred feet wide that is currently under a, under a buffer restriction. But probably something that isn't going right up to the edge of the parking that they're showing. So we'll, we'll probably anticipate something somewhere in between that allows for adequate environmental and wildlife corridors to, to remain and, and be enhanced and, and the facility to operate the way it needs to, so. So we do look forward to the complete, the completed application that, you know, kind of puts all of this together.
Right, I, I guess I just struggle with, if there is no plan to develop that area then what's, you know, why not? I don't, I don't see what, what the loss is or what the, the reticence is.
Oh, you're saying if there's no plans by the university to develop south of the parking?
Right.
What would be the apprehension in, well, I, I I don't disagree, it's, it's, you know, knowing that they, they have, you know, the, the I P D developed a standards for the total amount of square footage. So it, I don't believe it's a matter of them losing the square footage that isn't being built here. That they have the ability to build that someplace else on the campus. But they just wouldn't be building it here. And, and this proposal is satisfying, so I, I understand your point, but let's, let's see where they feel they need to have the flexibility. It might be, you know, just enough room to snowplow the parking lot, I, I'm not sure, or, you know, grade and maintain it or put in a, you know, a bike trail or something, but let's let's see what they have to say. But I think everybody's had an opportunity to say their piece on how we would think about this. And, and not just you know, wouldn't, wouldn't say arbitrarily or, or prescribe specifically where it needs to go. So let's I think everybody knows where to go now. All right, we do have a motion and a second to table, is there Rem, I, I guess Ramsey, on, on the seeker, the seeker lead agency, are you seeing, I'm, I'm hearing things that, you know, D O T and Monroe County D O T. You're gonna have Water Authority. Are you thinking this is unlisted coordinated review?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Well, the reason coordinating the review is more cuz the town boards lead agency.
And town board was lead agency based on the I P D?
On the I P D.
Yes. Okay.
But I'm trying to get a proposal from, for this to say to the town board, we got a good proposal. And let the planning board continue being the lead agency so we can get a rap on this.
Okay. But as far as, as far as lead agency letters and any coordination that goes out reading as the town of Brighton, not not necessarily planning board versus town board.
Now, we would write to the town board, be a lead agency, the planning board requesting lead agency and
Yeah.
the law form and we have a little work to do there, but that's, that's the idea.
Understood. All right, thank you. I guess moved, moved and seconded on the motion to table, Ramsey, will you call the role?
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Wasowski.
Hi.
Motion passes, the application is tabled. We can move on to signs, which I think Jeff, you're gonna call up, is that right?
Yep. The first sign is sixteen thirty-one, it's located at fourteen forty-one Monroe Ave, it's a building face sign for Exelon Wealth Advisors.
That's the old bank.
Your bank, that's they're moving, they're moving two doors down, huh? They're on corner of Sylvan right now.
No, I don't think they are, are they?
Yeah, I thought, aren't they?
No, I think it's different one.
Oh, it's, so it's just another.
You know, think about where you are, wealth advisors are, there's a number of them up and down the avenue.
Wealth advisors and nail salons.
Yeah, and, and boutiques.
All right.
Looks nice though.
Looks really nice.
As, okay. Move to, this was approved as presented, so this is number application sixteen thirty-one. Motion to approve as presented.
I'll move it, Altman.
Second price. Oh, I've got center.
Babcock Steiner's got it.
All right.
Ready? Wasowski.
Hi.
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Elaine.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Approved as presented.
Okay.
Next is for the sign application sixteen thirty-two at twenty-six seventy-four West Henrietta. Um, there, this one that needs a variance for additional signage, but they're removing some signage from the buildings. And they're adding other signage, so they're taking some, some of these brand signs here and replacing with a larger blue sign. And then on the other face, they're they're kind of like legalizing these signs cuz they weren't approved before, but they're gonna go through the zoning board process to approve the, the brand signs that are there currently.
Okay. All right, is this
Was approved.
We, we can't approve this conditionally, can we?
But they don't get their variances there, they're down. You could prove it with the condition that all variances be obtained?
Yeah. I don't know if you like, I know you don't like to do that, but is this one of those we could?
Jeff, your thoughts?
Yeah, the application's into the zoning board, I think it'll be okay to approve with conditions.
You guys aren't any problems with it, then I would go for it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve as presented in the application.
Would be approved with conditions? That all variances, all required variances be obtained?
I was just gonna say that.
It is as presented.
You know, I, I get my one chance, Ramsey. All right, we're moved and seconded. Let Jeff call the role.
Jeff?
Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Wasowski.
Hi.
Is approved with conditions.
Jeff, this is all yours, I'm sensing from Billy, he doesn't want to hear from me anymore, so.
Not on sign.
No, you cut me off, I'm cutting you.
I'm done for the night.
The next is science sixteen thirty-three at sixteen fifty-five Elmwood Ave, it's for Latimore Physical Therapy.
Anybody have any issues with that?
Was approved as presented by the Architecture Board.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented and approved by the A R B.
I'll second.
Giving it to the, tie goes to Delaney.
Call the role, Altman.
Hi.
Price.
Hi.
Vader.
Hi.
Delaney.
Hi.
Babcock Steiner.
Hi.
Wasowski.
Hi.
Approved yesterday.
Very good. I have one last thing, I'd wanna double check, is this group, now that we're getting the reports out earlier and doing the agenda review, do you still wanna move our meeting time up? We had last time had talked about moving it from seven o'clock to six forty-five.
When, just to be clear, whenever we start, it's going to be in this public forum. There's not gonna be any private pre-meeting, so whether we start at six forty-five or seven o'clock, the meeting will run like we ran tonight, called to order in public, whether we're in person or on Zoom and then with staff report and discussion as we did it tonight.
Seven honestly works better for me, I know it's only fifteen minutes, but even today with getting, picking up the boy and getting dinner and stuff, it was, I was eating. Seven, seven does work better for me.
I'm okay with either, but seven is fine.
Sure.
Yeah, seven o'clock's good, this is John.
Again, if you guys have questions too, we can talk. The reason we were doing the, the review before was just that I was giving you the reports that night. And wanted to run through them with the, with you, so we can work on this as we go along too.
All right. Well, we'll keep it at seven, and I did like the pre-meeting, I thought the conversation felt like, like the old days. Sands Pizza, sorry.
I was gonna say, I'm still waiting for my pizza.
Maybe, maybe we should send little pizzas to everyone's house right at seven.
I feel like Laura should have to deliver it though.
I know. No change when Laura left, we can blame her.
Well, everybody have a
Everyone, happy holidays, see you in January, thank you everyone.
Happy holidays, everyone, bye bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, happy holidays.
You're welcome.
Bye.